Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. A quorum is present despite Mr. Petrovsky's absence and the meeting is therefore called to order. If we have any public hearings, they will be opened by reading the legal notice into the record. An applicant will have an opportunity to make a presentation. The board members may then ask questions. And upon conclusion of questions, we will open the matters to the public. The first matter on tonight is a special permit request for signage, and it is a public hearing. It's regarding property location, Part 96 Providence Highway. And I believe this is a continuation, so the notice has probably already been read into the record, correct?
Correct.
And is there a request for a next continuance on this one?
The applicant, Brian, is online.
Oh, so we're going forward. Attorney Al Mieda, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. There is a request for a continuance to the November 6th meeting date. I hadn't put in the request yet because I was just kind of confirmed that we'd be able to have the plans ready for the planning department's review in advance of that meeting.
Okay. So, November 6th, Sarah, is there a time if we were to continue to...
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM? Is there a motion with regard to the applicant's request?
So moved. Second.
All right. Motion to continue to November 6th at 7:00 PM. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? 4-0, so we'll see you on November 6th.
See you. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. The next matter, and is it too early to call? 7:05? We can move forward? Great. The next matter on the agenda is a site plan approval for 642 Washington Street Tax Solutions Incorporated. And who's... Do we have a presenter for this application? Anybody here? Anybody here? No?
I'm sure I have to get the front of the log.
Double check number's online.
I don't know who D. Low is, but it's possible I'm not yet.
Yes. Expecting whose? Is her name in code or Suzanne?
Susanna Murphy? No.
Nobody here with regard to 642 Washington Street?
You can pull off.
Yeah, we would call it later on.
Take that out of order, take it later on in case it's delayed.
Okay, well, we will keep our eyes open for this applicant. Okay, the next item on tonight's agenda is a Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Thank you. We have two consultants here with us tonight from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council who have been working with the town of Norwood to update our hazard mitigation plan, which gets updated every five years. So we're in that process now, and I will let them introduce themselves and the plan that we're working on.
Great.
Good. Thank you.
What's up?
We'll sit here. That's fine. You're welcome to stand or wherever you're comfortable.
Okay.
Just speak loudly so that the owl camera... That's the microphone that'll pick up your audio.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kat Kobel. I'm from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. I'm joined here by my colleague Molly Shay.
Hi.
I'm an environmental planner at MAPC, and we are here to talk about the Hazard Mitigation Plan updates. So I'm going to introduce the project and go through some backgrounds, the process, what we've heard so far, and then some next steps to look out for. So, like I said, I represent MAPC. We are a regional planning agency that covers... We serve the metro Boston area. We serve 101 municipalities and about 3 million residents, and Norwood is one of the communities that we serve. A little bit of background about the hazard mitigation process. In 2000, the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act required cities and towns who wanted to be eligible for FEMA grant funding to adopt a hazard mitigation plan. These plans are typically, like Holly said, updated on a five-year cycle, and they... Once they are approved by NEMA and FEMA, it makes the town eligible for grant funding. So the town of Norwood currently has a 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is their current plan. The one before was from 2011, and we're currently updating this as part of the five-year cycle So a little bit of overview of what hazard mitigation planning is. Do we do this to reduce impacts from natural disasters? And so these can be done through policies, programs, or projects. And a few questions that we ask ourselves when we plan for natural hazards is what can we do now to reduce future damages or future risks, which can be costly and sometimes deadly? And we also ask ourselves, what can we do to prepare ourselves for the future so that these damages are not as large? And some of the natural hazards that we are talking about is flooding, which comes with pressure on dams and dam failure, wind events such as thunderstorms, tornadoes, hurricanes, winter weather, earthquakes, fire, and extreme temperatures and droughts. So natural hazards are different than climate change, and I'm going to go over FEMA's kind of understanding of what that is and kind of how they come together and interact and what this plan is trying to do. So like I said, natural hazards are natural events, like weather events that we experience. And climate change is kind of the overarching, larger-scale weather patterns that impact these natural hazards. So they usually make these natural hazards that we've already experienced more frequent, more intense, and more disastrous. Natural hazard mitigation is done to reduce damage from natural hazards that are more short-term events. But in climate adaptation, we're kind of thinking about longer-term solutions, such as like making our coastline more resilient or anything from social resilience as well. So we're adapting to these climate change effects. And these all interact and come together like in this Venn diagram here, and so hazard mitigation planning is a form of climate adaptation. Next slide. So a few techniques for hazard mitigation planning.
Sorry, Kat.
That's okay.
Trying to make this optimize for folks who are online. I apologize. This is where you are, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a few techniques that we think about when we're doing hazard mitigation planning is, one, prevention, so that can be done through planning and zoning, property protection, especially on the coast, maybe building elevation, the materials we're using in building, public education, which is public outreach, like we're doing here tonight, or through surveys, that also correlates with social resilience and making sure people feel empowered by the information. Natural resource protection, making sure we take care of our waterways and wetlands, structural projects like dams and culverts, and then emergency service protection, like working with the police or fire departments and really considering critical facilities. So these are some techniques of hazard mitigation planning. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the process that we've done here in Norwood. This is a timeline of the plan development process. So we've gone over with the local team, who I'll kind of briefly introduce later. We've talked about hazard mapping, assessment of the risk and vulnerabilities. We've talked about where the critical facilities are in town. And then we have two opportunities for public meetings, so this is our first one. We'll then meet with the local team to discuss actual mitigation techniques that we recommend and what already exists. And then we'll prepare the draft plan to submit it to NEMA, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, and FEMA, the federal management agency. So our whole process here is guided by local team. We meet with them four times. We go over goals, and we talk about what they experience in the town and what we want to prioritize in the plan. And so you can see representatives from all these different organizations and departments, which is really exciting. So a few kind of tidbits of what we've heard so far in the meetings that we've had already. This is, of course, not exhaustive or comprehensive at all, but just wanted to lift up a few of the things that we talked about in these meetings. So, for example, we talk about maybe flooding in a neighborhood around Dean Street that has to do with old or maybe overburdened drainage pipes. We've talked about the Willet Pond Dam and how if there was a breach or an event with that dam, you know, how that would impact the town and what we can do to protect that. And then we also talked about things like other natural hazards, such as blowing snow or difficult roads in the wintertime. And so what we do when we talk with the local team is we have one of our GIS analysts come and map everything. So this is what we've mapped in Norwood so far. We have different hazard areas that are kind of the more polygon shapes, and then the green dots are critical infrastructure. We have a long list of those that will be in the plan. And so you can see how comprehensive this process is. And again, on the left, I've listed just a few hazard areas that we've identified. Again, not a comprehensive list. And this is the same map, but just going over that we've kind of touched on critical infrastructure. So those can be schools, senior centers, hospitals, town hall, et cetera. And so I've listed a few on the left, not comprehensive. And we also... Dams are included in those critical infrastructure as well. A few things we've heard from the local team about what the town is doing already. So we kind of break it out into natural hazard categories so that we don't miss any. And so, for example, we have one kind of overarching one that seeks to mitigate multiple hazards. So that might just be like general things, like the MVP plan that the town has gone through or having departments weigh in on different developments going on in town. And then in the individual hazards, things such as flood mitigation, we've talked about infrastructure improvements that have gone on or are going on since 2018, such as catch basin cleaning. Then we talked with... About fire mitigation, talking about droughts and public outreach in that area, winter weather, what the public works department does in terms of snow, and then other things such as down trees and other concerns that the local team have brought to our attention that they're already doing to mitigate. So the reason why we're here is because this is a public opportunity for folks to weigh in and take our survey, and for residents, stakeholders, community members, to take our survey and tell us what they want in the plan. You've kind of heard what we've talked about already, existing mitigation measures, but as we talk about things we want to do in the future for the next five years, we really want to hear your input and what you've experienced. And so we have a survey that you're invited to take. Now, if we can share that link out, it's mapc MA/Norwood HMP. So also, this is an opportunity for any questions from the planning board or anyone else. It's an opportunity for folks to kind of let us know what they've experienced or any questions you have on the process. Happy to answer those. Yes?
Have we gotten any grants regarding this? Yes?
We are actually paying our wonderful consultants with... fully with a grant that we received from FEMA and NEMA.
Have we got any other ones?
Not for the Hazard Mitigation Plan update. We've gotten some grants for things that were in our last hazard mitigation plan, and having the hazard mitigation plan is required in order to access FEMA grants for... Before a disaster happens.
Did we mitigate anything from before? Did we have some mitigation that we were doing with those grants?
Yeah, so I think in our department, the planning department and the DPW is also going for grants for things like replacing the Dean Street culvert, replacing the bridge on Westover Parkway.
And those have got covered by grants? Some of them?
They got some amount of state money for it, for those things. Not from FEMA, though. But they are in our plan.
All right. Are we in the process of doing something now that's mitigating something, flooding or any... Are we in the... I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, absolutely. I think... I mean, you can definitely answer this, but I went over a few of existing mitigation measures, and so those all really contribute to the safety of the community. And so that's why we meet with different departments, different community stakeholders, because they let us know what we're already doing. If they weren't doing those, you know, roads would be ice here, there would be more flooding, et cetera. But there's a grant on another side coming up. There's a grant called the Brick Grants, which they'll be eligible for, and so those are more infrastructure projects. And, yeah, I don't... You know, it's the town to decide if they pursue those, but it's absolutely an opportunity to do so.
And we're doing some mitigation now? Are we actually doing something that we need to keep this plan in? We need to update this because we're in the process of doing some kind of mitigation? I don't know the answer to these questions. Sometimes I know the answer. These I don't.
So part of what FEMA and NEMA look for is that the town team meets in between when the plan updates happen as well and sort of is able to take a look at what have we accomplished? What do we want to redouble our efforts on? And we did do that about a year ago and talked about... I know the airport has been doing a lot of work with both clearing out their ditches in order to keep water flowing as well as stormwater infrastructure. So that was a big one that we discussed along with those bridge and culvert replacements. In the planning department, we're also working on... We have a grant actually from MAPC called the Accelerating Climate Resiliency Grant, where we're working on the design for two stormwater retrofits. Green... That would be green stormwater retrofits. One is located at the Cleveland School, and one would be located here at the Savage Center.
And a green water retrofit means it's going to go back into the groundwater, not be transferred into the... To be cleaned?
That's the goal.
Okay. So, again, I think it's important for me. I think there might be other people out there that are interested. It all sounded good, but where does the rubber meet the road? What are we doing with this? Like, what are our critical... You said something about critical facilities? Other than Dean Street, which everybody that lives here knows about Dean Street. Are there any other critical facilities that we're looking at because...
Yeah.
It's critical.
Right. And, yeah, I didn't put that comprehensive list on. I can definitely share that with the ones we brainstormed, especially from the 2018 plan has... I think it was like 160 critical infrastructures already listed in the 2018 plan.
In Norwood? 160 in Norwood?
Yeah.
Hmm. Okay.
And so those are kind of, you know, points that we want to make sure we are... If they are in one of those polygons that we've mapped, such as like a flooding... A hazardous flooding area, we want to make sure that when the local team meets in a couple weeks or months, that we sit down and we're recommending new mitigation measures for the 2023, 2024 plan, so that when the town decides to apply for those FEMA grants, they can... FEMA will look at their plan and say, oh, you did mention that you wanted to do this at this place. And so that makes the grant more kind of valuable, and they can kind of connect the dots from a planning effort to an implementation effort. So kind of calling out these important areas in the plan means that they're planning already and setting themselves up for a successful grant process.
So that thing that we've got down by the circle, is that planting field road or university, you know, the mess as you come into town past Polaroid or Moderna, you know, where the...
Oh, yeah.
Is that part of this critical... Is that something... I know how that always floods down there before you... Is that part of this?
I'm not sure.
No?
I don't think it's disastrous. I think it's a...
That's stormwater management, right?
No, where it always floods.
So that area was identified as one of the areas that's prone to flooding in the plan. The work that's currently being done by Mass DOT does include storm... As well as Alexandria. So it's a Mass DOT project lower down, and then Alexandria is continuing the work a little further up Upland Road.
Where's Alexandria?
The landowners of the Moderna campus.
Oh, okay.
So...
So they're kicking in for all that stuff that goes on up there?
Yeah.
The transportation improvements.
It's the traffic lights.
Yeah. Traffic lights, turning lanes, that kind of thing. And then that...
I'm more concerned with that flood.
Mass DOT is doing that, that Prospect Street/Washington Street intersection, and that includes compensatory flood storage and stormwater treatment, but it wasn't a direct connection to this plan.
It wasn't?
No.
So it wasn't one of our critical facilities?
Can I add in to clarify? So the critical facilities are sort of like your hospitals, your schools, your town hall, sort of places that you, you know, you want to have a plan if there's a flooding event. You know, you want to know if a school is in a flood hazard area so that you can sort of plan that if there's a flood event, the town may have some sort of setup to deal with that, or sort of thing. So that's sort of what part of this plan does, is it says 100 and... Sorry. However many critical infrastructure, and then where does that lie within these different hazard areas?
Okay.
You know, certain areas at risk for, you know, fires or things like that, if there's wooded areas and things. It sort of overlays and takes that information so that the town has a better idea of what the risks are for different natural...
So is the hospital area because it's flooded before, is that going to be in the... Okay.
Yeah. And, yeah, this map here, we could kind of... We could leave this with you, and you could look over it. And we can... We're still in drafting mode, so we absolutely can add or change areas.
And my very last question. How many dams do we have in Norwood? Anybody know?
That's a good question. So we have two dams that are large enough to be regulated by the Office of Dam Safety. That's Ellis Pond and Willet Pond. We have a number of other dams, like the dam at Guile Pond, the dam off of Endicott Street and Alaviso's Park, Soap Mill Pond, and smaller run-of-the-river dams, but those are the two big ones. And then we also worry about the Hollingsworth and Post Dam right over our town line.
Okay.
As part of this hazard mitigation plan.
And those would be listed in the 2018 plan that we'll carry over as well.
Okay. I think that's it.
I have one. For the last update, has there been any lessons learned and able to apply it going forward?
That's a great question. Since we're kind of in the middle of the process, we're kind of even over like all existing conditions and what's changed since 2018. In the second phase of the planning and working with the local team, we will talk more and get more into details of, you know, this is listed as a recommended mitigation measure from 2018. How can we improve this? And so that's, you know, really what one of the meetings is centered around, is how can we improve it and change it or remove it and do something better or... So we haven't quite gotten to that step yet with the local team. That's definitely part of the process.
So one thing that will be highlighted in this update is our storm of June 2020, which the 2018 plan had some references to flooding problems in that area, but I think that storm really made it much higher on the priority list for the town.
So the next plan will have a few changes. We have a hospital concern.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Okay.
Did you want to talk about the next step settle?
Yes.
That's fine. I think, yeah, just sharing the survey.
I didn't mean to cut you short.
And you asked for the survey.
So the hazard mitigation. All right. The next item on our agenda is a site plan approval, one Moderna Way, bio banking modification to include Fire Road. And we have a team to present here. Good evening.
Joe Wade with Park Corporation. Also got representatives from Moderna, AR8, and the contact manager also.
Great.
You know what bio banking is? Okay. Bio banking, you know that?
What's a fire road?
Yeah, bio banking. You know what that is?
Can you clarify about presentations specifically? Which plan?
The latest plans...
Does it describe?
Okay, the 17.
So, Moderna bio bank.
Yep. Thank you.
Can I get that?
Well, there was a... Hang on. This is really just an amendment. We were here back in January this year for the building. There's a building addition that was part of this, and that's all. We're here, that was all approved. This is just really for the fire access portion of it, which was brought on from a request by the Norwood Fire Department. This is... So here, we've got the overall plan in the building, which was right up here, just north, kind of up here and off the page. That was approved. The fire access road is down here, the shaded area down here, which is attached. So the fire access road, it's brass paper material. It's pervious. And that was intentional just to not freeze runoff to the wetland area. We are going through some wetland areas, and we filed, and we've already gone through the process of Mass DOT, so we've already gotten that approval. And then there is a piece down here at the very south end that we just recently were coordinating with the fire department, just to make sure that they have those proper curving areas and access in that area. And in doing so, there was an existing... There's an island there and some existing parking spaces there that we are being removed. Parking in that area is not really... It's not accessed. It's not really even being used. I could go through the parking numbers, but I think it's like 1,500 total parking spaces and removing 18. 18 parking spaces, and by zoning, then you're around 900 something. So the parking spaces being removed is pretty difficult. And overall, this results in a net reduction in impervious surface.
Will you pull the old sheet out?
I think it's...
Is that the old sheet?
That's new. I think it's about 5,800... What was it? 5,800 square feet of impervious area existing and a new impervious area, it's like 1,200. So it's a reduction of 4,200... Roughly 4,200 square feet of impervious area by getting rid of those parking spaces and that island around the south end and stuff.
Joe? That new addition, has it been built yet? I know it's been approved, but has it been built or where are you with that?
For the most part, it's been built. Yeah, they're finishing up some of the interior stuff, I believe, right now, and some of the landscaping on the exterior of it also. Should be mapping itself.
So there were some suggestions from the town engineer and the fire department. The revised plans are in the process of being reviewed, if I understand?
As far as I know, the fire chief has seen this and he's reviewed it, and he has okayed this. There was a last minute... We met last Friday, and he asked for some changes, and these reflect... those changes. So in, in addition to the access down here, there was a couple of trees, well, actually there's three trees between the building and the fire access road that he wanted removed. So we were removing those trees, three trees, which were just south of this patio area, these three trees. And then there's also the trees that were in this, this island area that was getting removed. Those are also being demolished and we're proposing a one-to-one tree replacement.
So one-to-one tree replacement?
So, it's about 15 trees being removed, so we have 15 new trees.
Okay. Just where did those trees go? Spread out on the campus, the new trees?
We're proposing just moving them further to the east here, on the other side of the road, closer to the wetlands area, just kind of get them out of the way of fire access, or fire access to the building.
Thank you.
I know we're, we're modification to include fire road, both of my, what is bio banking?
I don't know if I can.
It's a storage facility, so we get samples, those samples we have to hold for seven years or greater. So these units hold four million patient samples and they hold at minus eighty degrees.
Okay, that's something we did like a long time ago, right? There was some kind of, in February, okay.
Yes.
That's a long time ago to me. So why is that on with our modification to the fire road?
Because it's the site plan, they want to add a fire road, they just want to add an extra fire access road.
Debbie, the board previously approved the site.
Right, we approved the fire road. We did not.
No, we approved the bio bank.
The bio bank.
It didn't include the fire access road at that time.
So they just want to add that to the.
Okay.
Sorry.
Not doing anything new with bio banking.
Just a fire road.
Okay, that's tomorrow night's problem, right?
It's almost completed, right?
Sarah, does the planning department have any comments?
I do have one question about the, the plans. So the town engineer has not had a chance to re-review these plans, this was dated the 16th, so, you know, sometimes we just need greater turnaround for that. I don't anticipate any major issues from the engineer, but the board should know that the final.
So as I understand it, the town engineer proposed a plan requiring water gate valves and some additional, so that's it, is there, I mean, does the board have any questions?
And I, I did have a conversation with him today about, just to clarify that, and I believe we've worked that out.
Sure.
So we actually have two insertion valves that were part of the original project, but I guess he wasn't aware, I never did see them on there, so.
And you, so in the, in the tree replacement is one-to-one at this point? Because there had, I think originally it might have been slightly less of a ratio.
It, we need to add three trees, but the intention is that it will be one-to-one.
Okay.
So the plans we have don't show 15 trees, but they show 12.
They, we need to provide three more.
All right, so if we were to vote and the condition were to be one-to-one, that, that would be something that wouldn't be a problem from your end?
Correct, yes.
All right.
I would also recommend a condition, just saying that the requests of the town engineer be satisfied in the final set of plans to be provided.
So on that, is there a motion? Are they ready? If this is more discussion, does anybody, Rob, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, just as long as the engineer gets a look at it and has a chance.
I think that will, we can make that a condition.
And the, we have, you know, the four.
Yeah, we're staying with those four conditions.
Four bullet points on the back.
Yep, exactly, yeah. So if somebody wishes to.
I'll move that we approve with those two conditions we discussed.
It's four conditions.
It's four conditions.
Yep.
And that would be all planting shall be native, after installation, a letter shall be provided to the community development department by a registered landscape architect certifying that all planting is in, all planting is in compliance with the approved landscape plan. All, number two is landscaping, both existing and proposed, shall be maintained. If the landscape plantings die, they shall be replaced in season with the same or better quality plantings. Plan, number three is plans should be amended to include yellow striping on the fire access apron as required by the fire department. And number four is applicant shall clear 12-inch and 18-inch RCP drains and provide sufficient evidence of such to the building department prior to issuing certificate of occupancy. Also, the plan calls for the approval of 15 existing trees and replacement or relocation. Actually, it's a, this is a little different.
No, but their, their condition will be one-to-one.
It'll be a one-to-one replacement, so if you're taking out 15.
That's all manageable.
You have to put in 15.
Yes. So that's a motion to approve with those four conditions.
And the engineer.
And they actually, the one about the town engineer.
Yeah.
I guess the way we.
Can you all take care of that?
To the satisfaction, provide satisfactory plans that satisfy the town engineer. Is there a second?
There's a second, can we have a little quick discussion?
Oh, well, if you need to discuss, then hold on a second.
Okay.
What's your concern?
So you're going to look at the engineer plans before, so that's not going to go back through us?
Correct.
Correct. And what is he asking for? The town engineer?
His is to do with the water mains.
The water mains? The 12 to 18 inch?
The water gate valve.
Water gate valve?
I think that's the focus of it.
So essentially, the comments the engineer already made, you're just looking for a final set of plans that the engineer has verified, that his requested changes have been made. Not to say, your motion wouldn't approve, you know, some condition maybe that the engineer would come up with next week that you're not aware of.
Okay, just these valves.
Really just verifies that the comments made by the engineer until this point are sufficiently addressed in the final set of plans.
All right, all that having been said, and the motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, all opposed? All right, four zero. Thank you very much. All right.
Bio banking sounds very odd, Debbie. Bio banking.
Deposits and withdrawals?
Yep.
Okay, so the next item on tonight's agenda is a joint meeting with the N B A, MBTA Communities Task Force, and we are going to be engaging in a status update presentation with regard to the draft bylaw. So do we have a presenter in the ready?
Sure. So it's been a little while since we've had the MBTA Task Force on your agenda. Tonight, the task force would like to submit the, let me just have the slideshow up, the recommendations. So we've got. All right, so I'll deliver this in Ernie's absence tonight. Ernie has been your representative on the task force for the last year or so, serving as our chair. A great deal of thanks to the task force members, Rachel Churchill, Shannon Greenwell, Matt, Pat Ronan, and then Mike Rosen, Holly and myself, Sarah Exeficio. This group of residents has really worked very hard to put together a set of recommendations for you that both meet the spirit of the law, the letter of the law, and also closely reflect the input that was received by the public. I just want to say that this group of residents was fantastic in showing up and really facilitating these, these public events and kind of rolling up their sleeves to conduct a public planning process. That was a very high quality, so kudos to that group. Just to give a brief overview, because again, I know it's been a little while since this was before the group, and also for anybody who's tuning in or watching this for the first time, the new section 3A law is an amendment to the State Zoning Act that requires municipalities like ours who are located near public transit opportunities to legalize multifamily housing by right within a certain distance of these train or commuter rail stations. So that's 177 communities in eastern Massachusetts with rapid transit, so subway lines, commuter rail, and then there's categories for adjacent communities and small towns that have proximity to those ones with, with transit. We're a commuter rail community. We have Windsor Gardens, Norwood Central, and Norwood Depot are the three located within town boundaries. So the state law was introduced in a housing bond bill in 2020. It requires a minimum allowance of 15 units per acre by right, again, not subject to the discretionary review of the special permit, but, but by right. The zone has to be of reasonable size, which was clarified in subsequent guidelines from the state for us as 50 acres or more. No age restrictions, the zoning has to allow for the development of housing that's suitable for families. And a certain percentage of that entire district had to be within a half a mile of those transit stations. And that, you know, was a figure that changed per community depending on the size of the community. For Norwood, 90% of our district would have to be located within a half mile of one of our three commuter rail stations in order to meet those state standards. To back up, I deleted all the slides from my public presentation about what zoning is because I think you're all experts by now. But this slide was, was in all of our info sessions about why zoning matters, and I do think it's important to kind of touch on the background here, that zoning codes really can be moral documents, the roadmaps for communities. And what we say in our zoning bylaw, it really does determine, you know, who lives, who works, what kind of businesses, how people recreate, right? Like, what happens here really is something that is set forth in the zoning bylaw. So if we do it correctly, it can really reflect our, our town's agenda and what our goals are for housing, transportation, climate, resilience and sustainability, diversity. By way of background, a lot of Massachusetts communities have very stringent and inflexible single-family zoning, where multifamily housing is not a use that's permitted, you know, anywhere. So it's impossible to build, illegal to build anything but a single-family home, which has the net effect of pushing out folks who can't afford a single-family home, as well as people who just have that preference to be able to reside in multifamily housing. On a community-by-community basis, perhaps that doesn't seem so consequential, but regionally, when every community in a, in an area has these types of rules, it adds up to something kind of bigger than the sum of those parts. And so we've seen the housing crisis in Massachusetts kind of push to exceptional levels in recent years. So section 3A, this new law was passed to really promote housing production in areas where the serious housing shortage has resulted. High home prices are pushing out a lot of folks in our community, but also statewide, we're starting to see some threats to the economy as workers and working families are squeezed out, residents are leaving the state. We're seeing less housing of choice for people across every social, economic level. We're seeing, you know, a lack of housing opportunity at different scales and different price points, so all across the board. And that was what kind of motivated the state to take action with the state law. So just to tie that back to kind of what the existing conditions are here in Norwood, Norwood does have, I think, a demographic offering that is a little bit more distinctive than a lot of the other 176 communities that are subject to this law. Tenure is probably the chief among those. Nearly half of all of our households here in Norwood are rentals, which is higher than the state average. That's not recent, it's not something that's only come about, as some might suspect, with the recent, you know, 40B developments that have been constructed. It's been more or less at halfway, that half figure has been consistent for decades here in Norwood. And it's just, it's our historical housing stock. You know, you've got a lot of duplexes, triple deckers, a lot of multifamily housing in Norwood that was built to house workers, essentially. You know, we're a post-industrial town, so our housing stock kind of reflects that, which means that just over half of our housing units are single-family homes, again, less than that state average. It's an older housing stock, so 20% was built after 1980, less than 10% of our total housing stock since 2000. Our density is higher than adjacent communities. Our enrollment in our public schools is roughly equal to what it was over 30 years ago. Our population is aging, average household size is decreasing. These are characteristics that are pretty consistent statewide, we're not super exceptional, I think, on those. But significantly, our housing is less affordable than it's been. So the statistic that I put here in the presentation about cost burden, I think, is an interesting one to break down. So cost burden is a term that's used when a household is spending more than 30% of its income, its gross income, on its housing expenses. So that might look like your rent and your utilities, it could look like your mortgage payment and your, you know, insurance. All of these housing expenses shouldn't equal more than 30% of what you're pulling in. So if you are spending more than 30%, you're considered cost burdened. Severely cost burdened is when you're spending over half on your housing expenses. And I think it's notable that in Norwood, 44% of our households are either severely cost burdened or cost burdened. This obviously has greater impacts on certain groups, so lower-income folks, of course, people who rent, younger households and individuals, and elderly households and individuals. All these groups, you'll see that figure is much higher than 44%, right? It disproportionately impacts these groups of residents here. Which is to say that the housing crisis has not skipped over Norwood, it is here, and although Norwood has long been a more affordable community, in part because it offers a more diverse portfolio of housing options and more multifamily housing, which tends to be of the most affordable of these choices, it's still here and, and people are struggling to move here or stay here or both. So the task force about a year ago formed, has been meeting regularly. It is in interim compliance with the state law. We have until the end of 2024 to bring a zoning proposal to town meeting and have it pass to create a district where this multifamily housing is permitted by right. The task force has been working diligently since then. Its process, you know, really started with getting an action plan to the state, very basic plan on how we're going to do this, right? That was submitted in January of 2023. It engaged on a series of public, public education events, trying to get the word out about what this was, like any discussion on housing or multifamily housing. There was a lot of, I think, fair to say, alarm and concern and misinformation, and so the task force worked really hard to try to get the proper information out there about what the assignment was in the first place and what it meant for the community. So there were, there was an in-person informational session that was held here in April, and we worked with the Norwood Record, which published a series of articles on the law and covering our events. We have a website that's been updated regularly, and CM has published interviews with both Ernie and myself on this. We held a League of Women Voters event in September, that was very well attended, and then of course, all of our meetings have been open to the public and information shared on an ongoing basis to anybody who contacts our office and asks questions. And then the community engagement portion of this really kind of got into full swing in late spring and throughout the summer. So this was a series of four small group workshops where folks were invited to hear a very brief presentation, learn about the assignment, learn about the law and what we were trying to do, and then meet in small groups to go over a series of discussion prompts and share with the town what their values for housing were, where they saw housing needs in the community, and their ideas about ways that we might come into compliance with this law in a way that works best for Norwood. I would say they were very well attended, we had great discussions at each group. They were, one was held in a hybrid format, others were held in person, we've had interviews, community events, and we had an online survey with over 100 responses as of today, so great, great feedback on that. So the task force has put together some maps with identifying parameters of two sub-districts that together would satisfy the, the new law, and submitted to draft bylaw language that would be a new section in the zoning bylaw. So that's what you have in front of you. So that's what you have in front of you. You have those maps, you receive a copy of the bylaw language, as well as a memo kind of summarizing, you know, basically this presentation, where we are and how we got here. So I just wanted to touch on very briefly this community engagement portion. I'm a big believer that good planning starts with a good public process. It's really important that people feel like their needs and their thoughts, that their feedback was all really considered, especially when you're talking about something that people feel so strongly about, like housing. So these were the house rules, is that fair? That were shared at all of our public events, and I do feel that people did a great job about honoring these, about not necessarily having a goal to agree, but to gain a deeper understanding of where folks come from. And I really feel like we were able to have some very productive conversations. So the more I put this slide up in public presentations, maybe the more it'll incorporate into the public culture here. So, yeah, we had a lot of great conversations. There were a variety of discussion points about what people's needs are and what their, you know, perfect world would look like as far as if they could, you know, draft something from scratch, what would Norwood look like and what kind of housing opportunities would they offer. Our small groups took, you know, lots of great notes. We have all of this, and we'll put it all on our website to share with the public so that they can see the outcome of these events, as, you know, you can sort through it as well. But we identified a lot of themes here. And, you know, these potential benefits of multifamily housing, that was a slide that I included in the initial presentation about why the state might impose such a law encouraging multifamily housing. And we did see a lot of feedback to support these themes. And again, it's housing opportunity, more access, more affordability across the board. So it's people who need to downsize, people who are looking for greater accessibility, people with mobility challenges, you know, college kids maybe returning home, finding their first place, families, you know, growing, middle-income families having more mobility to move around town or find a larger home. We heard from businesses who said that housing was a strong priority of theirs, that increasingly employee retention and being able to attract new employees was getting harder because the cost of living has risen so high and the housing market being what it is. It was something that businesses kind of reached out to us about. And a lot of people just wanting to continue to stay connected to Norwood because that is a proud part, I think, of who Norwood is, is people stay here and raise their kids here, and then their kids stay here and raise their kids here. So we saw a lot of themes about wanting that to continue. So the two sub-districts that were proposed, one fairly straightforward at Windsor Gardens. This is the parameter of the existing multifamily zoning district at Windsor Gardens. It's just the Windsor Gardens property. The other one is at Norwood Central, and you can see more closely on the maps that were in your packet, but this stretches roughly up Lenox Street from where the train crosses over at the bottom of Subway Hill. Between the train tracks and Lenox Street, there's a strip of manufacturing land all the way up to the train station. And then at the train station, the district kind of continues to include the print loft building that's already multifamily housing, the Avalon Development Land, and then further up to include the Lenox Plaza where Mustang Pizza is, and across to the Rockland Trust Building and the former Norwood Tire property. So that corridor down Lenox Street encompasses the proposed sub-district for Norwood Central. It also includes some parcels that are on East Hoyle on the other side of the train tracks across from the hospital. One is a current parking lot owned by Stewart for the hospital, and the other one is a mostly vacant piece of property that seems appropriate for potential redevelopment. So those are the proposed boundaries.
Sorry, on these little boundaries, there's numbers within the boxes. What do those numbers mean?
Those are lot numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, so these maps were pulled off of our GIs.
Okay, no, I didn't know.
They don't correspond to the addresses, which would be convenient. It's the lot numbers on their map.
Thank you.
So themes, we heard a lot about housing supply, how opportunities for housing were too low, there just wasn't enough. So the proposed zoning allows for a range of housing redevelopment that's actually buildable in the local market. And this is something that I think if Ernie were here, this is probably where he would pipe up and chime in. It's important to note that the state requires us to create districts at a minimum of 15 units per acre. 15 units per acre is not mid-rise housing. 15 units an acre in Norwood would look something more like the, you know, smattering of duplex housing we have on, you know, Vernon Street, that kind of corridor south of Nichols. It includes townhomes, cottage court-style development. 15 units an acre is actually quite, quite low when you compare to what we actually have on the ground here in Norwood. And so there was a fair amount of discussion. Well, one possibility for Norwood is that we could pass something at the minimum standards at that 15 units an acre, and it would satisfy state law. But if we wanted to look at this as an opportunity to encourage the types of redevelopment that we think would be appropriate and serve Norwood's needs, then the density standards that we would need to set would need to be a bit higher than 15 units per acre. So I think this is a point that I want to make sure the planning board is aware of. It was a subject of a lot of discussion with the task force, that it felt that the feedback we got from people saying, "We don't have enough housing, we don't have enough affordable housing, we'd like to see more housing opportunities that meet our needs," was an argument to be made for not just doing the minimum, right? Which would result in probably no changes, given the cost of doing business in our market. 15 units an acre probably wouldn't yield any actual development. So that was the note that I wanted to include there. Affordability was a major theme. The proposed bylaw in front of you includes an inclusionary zoning requirement of 20%. So any buildings eight units or larger would, under this zoning, be required to restrict 20% of the units as affordable to households at 80% of the area median income. This is generally, you know, comparable to what you already have on the books in the bylaw. I do want to note that the state has said if we do anything above 10%, we need to have a third-party economic feasibility analysis done to show that we aren't setting inclusionary zoning at an amount that's so high that it would stifle any potential production of housing. I feel very confident that that is not the case here because we've seen development done at, you know, 20% and it's been feasible, but we are waiting for that analysis to be completed. We did receive a technical assistance grant from the Mass Housing Partnership to be able to hire a consultant to do that study. So that's at no cost to the town and it's underway. But to take that a step further, the task force is recommending that there be a bonus available, so a development incentive, to a developer that elects to restrict an additional 5% of the units at 50% of the area median income. So that would be the first inclusionary zoning of its kind in Norwood, targeting that lower-income group. Very often, we hear a lot of folks who, you know, by way of knowing somebody who lives in one of these units or happening upon the numbers on their own, they say, "Gosh, you know, affordable rents in Norwood, those aren't affordable." You know, those are actually pretty expensive, which is not wrong. So that 50% of AMI would allow for an income targeting that would be more affordable to folks. So the bonus would be in the form of an extra height of building height, an additional story, which would allow for, again, it's an incentive, to provide some additional unit possibilities for the developer.
What are you doing about parking?
So the parking ratios that are set are one and a half spaces per unit for the Windsor Gardens sub-district. They are one space per unit for the Norwood Central. This is fairly consistent with some of the market research we did with developers and other, you know, successful projects that have been constructed in areas proximate to transit and downtown areas like these areas that are being proposed. This seems to be consistent with what's marketable for the types of folks who would sign a lease for a unit or purchase a condo within walking distance of an active downtown like Norwood's and the train station being kind of right there.
Can I ask how we get to a half?
That's what's being proposed.
What's a half a car?
So it's, the parking space is averaged, you know, for the whole.
So is it by bedroom?
No, by unit.
So they're just going to take the whole thing, one and a half?
How many units?
Okay, okay.
So if there's 30 apartments, you'd need?
Forty-five.
No, sorry, never mind.
One and a half.
Forty-five, right?
You'd need 45 spaces.
Okay, all right.
So the density suggests, the proposed density is not uniform throughout the entire zone, it changes?
No, the density would be different for Windsor Gardens as it would be for Norwood Central because they're, they're different. You know, they're different geographic areas. One's really close to the town center and has more walkable access to more goods and services. Windsor Garden, you know, is a little bit less central. You know, so they have some slightly different features, and so the dimensional standards that are proposed do attempt to reflect that. Traffic, you know, was an issue, so one of the things that the task force zeroed in on is that even though only 90% of our district had to be within that half-mile, 100% of what's proposed in front of you is within that half-mile, and most of it is actually quite a bit closer to really kind of increase the, you know, number of folks and new residents that would be less reliant on cars, right? Dumping less cars.
Can I ask a hypothetical? If Windsor Gardens, is there a, is there a percent number that the state set down? So if Windsor Gardens would like to do a heavier density, does that, then you can take out the Lenox piece? Is it?
No, so.
It's gotta be?
Yeah, so this is a, the law's all about zoning, it's not about production. So there's, there's no, we don't comply with the state law.
There's not a number we have to reach?
Because there's a number we have to reach, no.
Okay, all right, that was.
We come into compliance with state law by crafting a zoning bylaw that meets all of their checkboxes, right?
And they're giving you till?
The end of December.
Of this year?
End of 2024.
Oh, 2024, okay. So there's 176 communities that are affected by this? And it was optional way back when?
It's not optional.
Did they change?
It was never optional.
Okay.
They clarified to make it sure that everybody knew it was definitely not optional.
Okay, but how, what was that thing where you could opt out?
You could never opt out.
Does it change, have they solidified what grants you're foregoing and?
Yeah, so initially, you know, they said that if you don't come into compliance with the state law, that you would be subject to lose eligibility for discretionary funding from what was then called DHCD and a couple of other state programs. And a lot of communities said, "Well, we don't want that money anyway. We don't get those grants, we don't need those grants, we're not going to come into compliance with this." But the reality is, it's a state law, it was always a state law. Those state laws are not optional. And so I think once most, you know, the conversation, that public narrative went in that direction, the state attorney general did issue an advisory saying that any community that does not come into compliance to this will be subject to suit, that there would be legal consequences for failing to come into compliance with this new state law. In addition to losing eligibility for funding.
Okay, so was that misinformation or was that the information the state gave us and they changed their mind?
The state law has always been the state law. Communities shall create a district.
So what was that piece with, you're not going to get these grants if you don't comply?
So there's the state law that comes out, right? And that's Chapter 40A, Section 3A. And then there's guidance that the state issues to kind of further clarify and create the mechanism by which these, you know, this is considered compliant, the process by which it's reviewed for approval, right? It kind of flushes out the details. The guidelines put together that short list of discretionary funding. But I think, like I said, at some point, the narrative took that turn, that it was optional. It was not optional. And when.
The state never said it was?
It would be optional, the attorney general made it very clear. Communities must come into compliance.
Okay. Can I, I'm going to ask as if I was a member of one of these public reach meetings, I, there's no way that these zoning, the zoning effort can be tied into whether or not the projects would include ownership or rental properties?
Nope, so this is really about multifamily housing. The town doesn't really actually have the ability.
There's no ability to influence that.
To kind of influence that. This could be ownership, it could be rental, it would really be subject to the owner of the property, whomever's developing it and what the market is at that time.
Okay. And on, on this, you take the Central Station and everything is within a half-mile here? Okay. And actually, some of them are actually even closer to Railroad Depot?
Yeah, there's a heavy amount of overlap between those two because they're so close to each other.
And everything is all Windsor Gardens here, and that's all within a half-mile of the train station. And there's been some development there where we already have, we already have housing, right?
If I go back to answer Debbie's question, the density standards that are set forth in the Windsor Gardens sub-district are slightly greater than what's existing on the ground now. So if the current owner or a future owner of that property wanted to renovate, rebuild, reconstruct, redevelop the campus, they could do so to allow for some taller buildings or, you know, more, more units than they have existing there now. There would be some incentive to do that. I'm sorry, joke ahead.
Yeah, and on the, on the density bonus, is it, is it going to be 15 and then you get the bonus, density bonus if you want to go over the 15?
So the bonuses are set to building height, not to density. So the maximum allowable building height, we calculate building height in feet, the state is calling it stories, so we're kind of using language to correspond with, with their requirements. The zoning that's before you, that's being proposed, sets a standard for three stories, maximum building height for Windsor Gardens and Norwood Central because the buildings in that area are, the scale is a little bit taller already. To kind of keep it consistent with that, there is a maximum allowable building height to four feet, four feet, four stories with a step back. So you could have, I want to say it's 20 feet from the right-of-way is your, your front setback. You could have a three-story building at 20 feet, and then at 40 feet from the right-of-way, you could introduce that fourth story of height. It's a way to mitigate that visual impact of a taller building so that when you look down the public corridor, you know, you don't have that tunnel effect, right? That people tend to fear. Having kind of that step back with landscaping in the front and all, that can really kind of mitigate that. So the tallest portion of the building in that sub-district would be the part by the train tracks, if that makes sense.
Does Windsor Gardens meet the 15 units at this time, 15 units per acre?
The underlying zoning does not, no. So the, any development, redevelopment that would exceed what's on the ground now at Windsor Gardens would need to take advantage of the overlay. This would be an overlay.
Mm-hmm. And I think it's great that it's an overlay, and it certainly makes sense that folks, if they want to keep it, any kind of business that's going now, they will stick with it if they find it, and it's not mandatory. I think it's something that has to be out there, be clear.
Yeah, absolutely. This isn't, like, again, it's not a production mandate, so all this does is create options This isn't, like again, it's not a production mandate, so all this does is create options for the types of development that are possible. Any parcel in town, as you know, you know, it's, there's multiple uses that are permissible on every parcel. And whether or not a current owner takes advantage of that, this is just adding more options.
And if we look at the other sub-district in Central, we, we're really looking mostly, most of it, if not all of it, if it's not all of it, where it is either manufacturing or industrial in some respect and/or there already is housing there. And there's, they're not taking away from any single families there. So in order to come up with this plan, I think it was done pretty well to keep things probably as similar as it is, as it can be. I'm sure if it was done elsewhere, it would be more disruptive to what we already have. This may not have great effect when it comes to the production end of it. I mean, it's, there is no production, but the zoning is set up in such a way that if someone came in to implement, it would not be nearly as disruptive as people have been talking about is what I need.
I would agree. Yeah, that was a point of feedback that the task force heard over and over again, is scale, right? Would it seem inappropriate to have a seven-story apartment building in, you know, my single-family neighborhood? Yeah, of course, that would be, your word is disruptive. It wouldn't be in scale with what's existing, you know, what's there already. The sub-districts were chosen in part because, you know, they're right near these train stations, but the parcels themselves were chosen because there are areas where this would fit and the dimensional requirements that are being proposed in the bylaw language that's before you, you know, these are dimensional standards that aren't a huge deviation from what's already allowed. And that was really what the task force was trying to get at when they were responding to those concerns about, about scale and what's appropriate for a neighborhood. And that's where Norwood already had a leg up, right? That's, you know, the question that we've gotten a lot is, well, we already have so many apartments, why aren't we getting credit for them? And like, because it's not a production law, right, there's no credit for having existing multifamily housing. But it does make it easier for us to create a district that's, you know, more in harmony with what we already have. And so the Norwood Central and Windsor Gardens sub-districts here are both areas where there's existing multifamily housing. So, yeah, it makes some sense to locate it there.
Then, may I?
Sure.
I appreciate your, the percentage of rentals, of you broaching that subject because we're fifty percent, is that your?
It's, it's not quite fifty.
Okay.
It's over forty.
And that, you know, it's not us, it's not Norwood that's not compliant, that is keeping out people, that's not multicultural, it's, that's not us. We're already there.
I would agree.
So I appreciate your being open and honest with all of us that we are at forty-nine percent, okay? Wherever, we're bouncing around.
Multifamily housing and rentals are not necessarily the same thing, right?
Well.
But there is heavy overlap between the two and I would say, yeah, we've got more diversity of housing choice.
Okay.
We have more options here.
And in our, in our four meetings, did we have ten people at a meeting, thirty people in a meeting?
It was a range, we had close to forty at one and I think our smallest one was five or six.
That sounds right.
Yeah, so it was a range.
So we incorporated maybe a hundred people total?
Yep.
That have been involved? Because the paper, it's gotten press in the paper and it's, again.
This is what it is, Mr. Baker gave us this in his final, off the door. I don't know.
Yeah, so just kind of quickly, I just want to summarize the last couple of points here. Open space and sustainability, we got a lot of theme, you know, again, consensus building. Open space is really important to people in Norwood, they want to be able to kind of conserve what we have left or in the case of redevelopment, maybe introduce some green space back more. I'm looking at you, Mrs. Holmwood.
Thank you.
So the bylaw requires thirty percent open space for a minimum here.
Our bylaw?
What's being proposed.
Okay.
And we'll offer a bonus for forty percent open space. Sustainability, you know, again, these are promoting more walkable communities and one important thing to note there too is that we are allowing mixed use, we're not requiring mixed use in this overlay, but mixed use is permissible. So any project that's developed under this overlay in either the Windsor Gardens or the Norwood Central would have the opportunity to have a mix of commercial and residential, which I think for Windsor Gardens in particular has some potential insofar that right now commercial is not allowed in that area, but to the extent that future redevelopment in that area, they were to go that route, you might see more goods and services in that little community there that perhaps folks now would have to walk down, you know, maybe one A to get to the nearest market or something like that. So it definitely would have the effect if that were taken advantage of, to create, again, that more walkable vibrant community where everything is right there that I can need. So that was kind of the major points. What else, what other questions do you have?
When you were talking about the mixed use, does that lower the, the number of units they can put in if they're doing the retail down below or?
It could potentially, you know, if you've got a ground floor retail or, you know, and mixed use can be different buildings on the lot too, if the lot's large enough to sustain, you know, one building that's just commercial and then others that are residential, you know, that's allowable too, it depends on the mix. But the one area that we did discuss at the last meeting was relative, there's a slight overlap between the, the boundaries of the Norwood Central sub-district and the Central Business District overlay, which already does allow multifamily development up to thirty-two units an acre. So there's some slight overlap and that's Norwood Plaza, Rockland Trust and Norwood Hire. There was some concern about, well, if that is now included in the Norwood Central overlay, someone could redevelop that and we'd lose the commercial component of that. They could develop it as multifamily only and, and reduce kind of the commercial revenue, you know, that the, the town receives on that. So a development incentive, another bonus was offered in the bylaw, there's current language there that allows an extra story of height for any property that exists in both of those districts that pursues mixed use. So we're not requiring mixed use, but we're giving an incentive for them to retain a commercial component.
Is there a percentage minimum?
Twenty-five percent.
Okay. Unlike that thing where sure, the TPC factory was where they were going to put in one little space, remember down, what's the street behind the Traxx there? Lennox, is that?
No.
Yes, Savagrin or TSP is my favorite cleaning product.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the Savagrin.
But they, remember they, that was their commercial component or whatever that was a community room or a coffee.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
With a coffee pot or something.
North Central, right, yeah.
So twenty-five percent floor area was the, the figure that the task force threw out there again, you know, this is.
All up for.
This is up for discussion.
Okay.
You know, you all are the elected planning officials of the town, so the ball's really kind of in your court at this point, the task force is handing this to you and saying, well, here's our, here's our draft. So I think for right now, given the, the schedule that we're on, we're hoping to bring this to special town meeting in March, which gives us plenty of time for further discussion informally with this board, if there are suggestions for further areas of study or changes you want to explore, for you to discuss and send back, the task force and staff can work together to answer those when you feel ready, that you have a final draft that you're comfortable bringing to town meeting. You know, those next steps, I would recommend starting to have public hearings, potentially meetings with affected landowners, you know, that next level of community.
Do we have to contact them, the landowners? You're not really.
We don't have to, but I, I would recommend it as a way of making sure that everybody knows, you know, what this is all about and give them the opportunity to have, have input.
How many acres is Windsor Gardens? Twenty-seven rings a bell, is that even close?
It's actually about fifty.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, the acreage, these two sub-districts would be above the fifty, would, what's in front of you does comply with all of the state's requirements.
And does that include the MBTA station that's on Windsor Gardens?
So the.
Because how does that work?
Includes the property, but that's excluded land, so it's excluded, it doesn't count because it's not really developable.
Okay.
Similarly, the MBT lot on the, I'd say that's there too.
That's excluded land as well.
So when you were talking about the multi-use and you were talking about the twenty-five percent, is that a minimum or a maximum or what?
That would be a minimum, I believe that's what it is.
Our sign guy. We never.
Yeah, we shouldn't ask it.
We go back to the sign.
No, we'll go back to that and close this up.
That's at least twenty-five percent of gross floor area, so that's a minimum.
So they would have to have that much or not have any?
In order to qualify for the density bonus.
Okay, the density.
Or the building height bonus.
Okay, no, I was just thinking of the, the development that was proposed by the Traxx. They, I don't think they needed that much area and I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you. Great. Well, thank you so much, it sounds like the task force has done a great job.
Yeah, and Patrick Ronan is online, just to give a shout out, Pat's one of our task force members, so.
Hello, Patrick.
He's able to make it here tonight.
Sir.
Do you have any other questions? Do you have any other areas where you'd like more information or like the task force to return on another meeting with kind of a, you know, more study?
I think there's plenty for us to chew on, although do you guys?
Yeah, I have a, so the, the next step is, we're going to read what you gave us.
Okay.
And then are, do you want us to meet with the task force and, in this format or?
That's really at your discretion, honestly, I mean, I.
Well, who's, we have to present it to town meeting.
You would be bringing this to town meeting, you would be sponsoring the article.
And it'll be in the warrant?
When the warrant opens, probably in like January, this would need to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen for placement on the warrant and that would be sponsored by the planning board. So, you know, you have to take ownership of it at some point and so, you know, this is your opportunity to, basically like we're still in the ref draft phase where we could tinker with it. So any tinkering that you want to do, you can read as individuals and maybe if you have suggestions or notes, you could submit those to staff and we could discuss them, you know, at your next scheduled meeting, we could do that is one option.
May I, to avoid the thing that we had with the last member, it came through us, we presented a town meeting and, and Baboomski, so would I be suggesting at this forum that maybe we mail, after we get a final draft, we mail each and every, mail, not that thing, we mail them a copy of, so they'll have it. Remember, that was the argument, we didn't know, we didn't get it, I'm not, I don't have, I don't use the computer.
My recommendation on this one is that you have a, we actually have a meeting, like an in-person meeting where we invite people who own property in the district, again, to talk about what it would mean, because rezoning has an impact on property values. So if you're in this district, I think it would be helpful to have that meeting. As far as mailing notice of the public hearing that you would hold, like you do on all articles for zoning amendments, again, we don't have any obligation to mail notice of that public hearing, but I would recommend mailing it to those with property in the proposed district and those immediate abutters.
That's, that wasn't, that's a great idea, but that's not where I was getting. After we get this plan and we all hammer it out and we get from your rough copy to, okay, here's our ideas, now we've decided, here's, you know, your bonus, your this, your that, your height, that before that gets presented to town meeting, so the people that read their package, don't read their package, it's this thick, we don't pick it up at the table.
So we could hold those public hearings before the warrant opens, which is what you're suggesting, so that there's still an opportunity for folks to provide comment, us to make changes and then submit something to the warrant that actually reflects those changes.
And that's what they're going to vote on at March town meeting? I just would like to.
I mean, of course, there's always the opportunity for floor amendments.
I, I get that, but I don't.
If those in the warrant.
I don't think it was, it wasn't clear last time. Now, I do believe that a democracy is something that's got to be watered daily and it's your responsibility, it's all of our responsibilities to get the information, but sometimes the information is like drinking out of a fire hose.
And this is complicated.
It's complicated. We're going to hammer it down to, you know, for, for me, keep it as simple as possible. I think if you can't explain it, you can't sell it. If you can't explain it, there's something fishy. You've got to be able to explain it to the average person, okay? So that would just be my suggestion, which I will make to the board after we get it down to this is what we're suggesting, this is what you're going to vote on. So it doesn't, I mean, that last thing at town meeting was. It was craziness and I don't blame people because it was too.
We don't want to get to town meeting and people feel like that they didn't have a chance to participate in that process.
Right, or it was too complicated to understand or you had to read the whole planning book or I didn't understand. Not illegitimate.
It's coming upon us to make sure that folks have that power to do it.
That'll be my suggestion when we're, we're banging it out.
Right, so it sounds like it's coming upon us as a board and hopefully we can get back and move to coordinate the seat.
What I would say is between now and, you know, either the next meeting or the one after, maybe the next meeting, if you on your own review of the bylaw, if you have any suggestions or edits or things like that, I would say submit them to Holly and I and we will compile them and put them in the packet for discussion in open session at the next meeting, does that sound like a good plan?
Sounds like a nice point.
Great, thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much and it's very interesting. So moving on to the next, actually, I'd like to go back to that, that sign application. Do we have applicants in the room for, where were we, 642 Washington Street?
No. I, it's a, it's a minor sign review, I think.
Do we need to have a presentation or anything?
I don't know that you need a presentation.
The recommendation.
Certainly have somebody to review.
It's not a public hearing, so.
Okay.
I think you could conduct a review of it and if you need to stall to another meeting when they could be here to present, you certainly can, but if there's an opportunity.
I mean, we kicked it over just to give an opportunity to come in, right?
You can, but you certainly could have reviewed it tonight, have you felt like this?
It seems pretty clear and straightforward. I don't see anything unusual, it fits within the parameters and so on and so forth, if you're ready. I don't know, does anybody have thoughts or concerns? Mrs. Holmwood?
No, no, I'm not. No, I don't, I don't, I don't have thoughts and concerns about tax solutions, except I do want us to eventually take on as a board, putting some sign, some new sign things in, but that's down the road. What I would like to go on record of saying is, I have called and called, Sarah will attest to this, we are getting, it's getting out of control downtown Norwood with the stickers on the windows. It's all great businesses, I use them, I love them, but it's getting out of control. Between Houston Nails, The Bubble Place, all great businesses, glad to have them, love that they pay high, you know, use it, ju, I can't say, say Juzitsu for me.
Three businesses on Friday did receive notices of violation for window signs that took up more than thirty percent.
Yeah, even the convenience store, again, all places that I use, that I appreciate that are there and it's great downtown.
Compliancees.
It's out of control. It's gone from a little to, so we have.
As for the, no.
As for this guy, it's different, but.
Just because it's the application, just put on sign.
I get it. But he should know upfront, like the last guy that came upfront and changed what they put in that we approved, he should know upfront that this is what we're approving and you have to have.
One thing we've done in the past that we can be committed to doing going forward is in your certificates of action, when you issue the approval of, you know, what's being proposed here, we, like, we always include, for example, a line saying, like, this approval does not include any interior. we, like, we always include, for example, a line saying, like, this approval does not include any interior illuminated, you know, lights for the sign. You can't put that in without coming back to the board. We can do the same thing, just giving a general advisory. Any window decals or window coverings must be at thirty percent or below, so just.
Just in here.
Can we, can we do that as a, can we do that?
Reminder of the existing regulations. We can certainly do that.
Agreed, let's do a front one.
Right.
I mean, it should be inferred, but if it needs to be stated.
Absolutely.
That said, given the fact that the, that it's a metal sign, I believe it adheres to all other requirements is there, motion.
Motion to approve. Does anybody have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Okay, four zero, approved.
All right, moving on. Okay, the next agenda item is a request for an opinion to the ZBA with regard to the Boston, the BPH District Footnote Twelve. As it pertains to a particular application or just generally?
So the, just as a refresher, footnote twelve was part of the series of zoning changes that the town passed through for the Boston Providence Highway District. Footnote twelve is a footnote to the use table. It says that certain uses are permissible as ground floor uses only within a hundred feet of the right-of-way. The footnote goes on to state the intent of the bylaw edit, which is to preserve, basically, that prime, visible, you know, ground floor, commercial space for those businesses that rely on the visibility from the right-of-way for their, their customer base. So retail-oriented businesses largely rely on being able to be seen by the motorists as they, they drive past. So every use in the use table is, you know, allowed, allowed by special permit, not allowed, and if it is allowed, some are subject to that footnote. So footnote twelve has become the subject of two recent appeals to the zoning board. One in the form of an appeal and one in the form of a special permit request. One is for an urgent care for a building that's never been filled but was constructed. The building where Taco Bell is, which I'm sure you remember quite well from your site plan review on that one.
Still have.
It hasn't had anything in that spot. It's been vacant since it was constructed. An urgent care wants to go into that, that space. There's no specific definition in the bylaw for urgent care. It fits under medical clinic, I believe, is the, the use category, which is subject to footnote twelve. Now, the front of that building is eighty feet from the right-of-way. So the determination made by the building commissioner was, you know, what are you going to do about this? You know, basically, you can't have this use at eighty feet. The second case that's before is for one fifteen Norwood Park South, which is not a new building, and it was recently in use as a medical lab, I believe. It's been vacant for less than two years and renovated as a medical office suites.
Where is that?
So that, Norwood Park South is the entrance to, like, where the Holiday Inn Express is.
Oh, okay, got it.
FedEx is on the one corner. The building on the other corner is the one. That's subject to a hearing that'll open tomorrow night from the ZBA. Again, pre-existing structure, it's closer than that one hundred feet. Both are slightly different. The building commissioner has delivered a memo to the ZBA saying that he believes a special permit is the relief that's necessary for both of these applications, because both were pre-existing, non-conforming structures, and section five point two, point three allows for a special permit for a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. The building commissioner has also said that he believes both of these uses would be in the spirit of intent of the bylaw, especially the urgent care one. Urgent care being a use that in some ways is kind of retail-oriented.
I thought he said no.
Well, he had to, because his job is to apply what the bylaw says, and the bylaw says that that use was subject to the footnote. Be that as it may, ZBA opened the hearing on the urgent care at least a couple of weeks ago and was undecided, has not closed the public hearing, but wanted to solicit comment from the Planning Board out of respect to both the Planning Board, who put forth this change to the bylaw quite recently, and also out of respect, I think, to town meeting, having passed this zoning, and kind of wanting to get your comments on the overall situation and the intent of the bylaw and its application on these types of uses and structures. It is unusual that the Planning Board would be called in to provide comment. Your authority is separate from the ZBA's, but at the same time, I do think it's a reasonable request, given the fact that this is really the first round of tests of this footnote, right? It's fairly new.
So it's in the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe. Well, no, I guess this is just really just our, our thoughts and brainstorming here. Well, I, I, well, go ahead, Joe, you seem to.
I guess you can read this two ways when they talk about retail-oriented.
Actually, just for the benefit of everybody here and watching, you wanna read the footnote?
Sure.
Yeah.
Footnote twelve, Route One ground level use restriction. These uses shall not be located at ground level within one hundred feet of Route, of the Route One right-of-way line. The purpose of this restriction is to preserve the frontage area for retail-oriented and publicly accessible uses that rely on visibility of customers traveling along the Route One corridor. I suppose you could read these, this, two ways when you talk, when you combine the two, when they talk about retail-oriented and publicly accessible, does that mean you have to have both, or can you say it's an area that is retail-oriented essentially, or? Or it's for those that are publicly accessible. You can read it two different ways. Actually, as a common sense sort of thing, when you see urgent care, it's newer than some of the medical things we've seen before, and it's, it's part of our healthcare system, and it's new, but it's, it fills a different need than having to go to a hospital or, or, you know. And people do, the public accessibility, the whole idea of being something visible and being able to see it on Route One, it allows people to know where it is and when they do need it, where to go if they've got some minor emergency, not to, not if they've got a, you know, something serious, they'd have to go to the hospital, but it definitely serves a purpose. So I don't know, it, it can go either way.
So my thoughts, and so as Sarah said, this is a rather new footnote of, I mean, excuse me, it's a, it's a, it's an element of a rather new piece of our zoning, right? Then it's largely untested or essentially untested at this point. I'm with Joe on this. An urgent care, although not, I don't think anybody can strictly define it as a retail business, does rely upon its presence in a public way and having some sort of, it, it, it's not a business that effectively can be hidden away like, like some specialist medical office, and, and it does work off of the visibility and the traffic accessibility. So I would have no real objection to that. It's slightly unfortunate that the word retail found its way into this description, because I don't, I don't think that that was the specific intent. It was more.
Well, it says retail-oriented.
Yeah.
All right.
It was, yeah, it was more to avoid having.
So this, this clinic falls in line with it because it's retail-oriented.
I would agree with that.
It's not retail, it's not mercantile where you're gonna go in and go shop.
No, but it's transactional and, and people are coming, and you could very well find yourself driving down Route One saying, I need to find an urgent care, and there is one. It's the, the purpose of it, to, to rely upon its visibility and its convenience and its presence.
Right, but there's, there's gonna be a sign on the pole, whatever, next to Taco Bell, you know, people would, would see that sign and also know.
What was the second, is, the, the Norwood Park South business?
Would just be for medical offices, not specifically an urgent care. That one is.
Yes, they, they came in front of us before, having to deal with the parking.
What, what were they?
Site plan review.
What were they? Were they?
It was, I think, it was mostly labs.
Labs.
Yeah.
So is a lab different than an office?
Yes.
Yeah, lab's different than an office?
Yeah. You're doing work.
So I don't know if anybody else has thoughts.
Just on this, we're looking at, we may be able to solve this in, in two ways, and we may wanna use both. And one is to let them, look what we're doing right now, is letting them know what we're thinking about this on the short term, as far as if we all agree that it would be fine for them to allow for this. They certainly came to us because it wasn't as clear as it could be. And perhaps this would take a little longer, but we may wanna address number twelve, number twelve here, footnote twelve, to take care of it in the future so that it is not, that it is clear. And we can discuss that and see what needs to be changed.
If that was an or, I mean, I think, I think, yeah.
According to the definition of the footnote, and part of it is which uses in the table, because remember, there's dozens of uses in the table that precedes this footnote. It's which uses have that asterisk directing you to. I think you could go in a couple of different directions with this. I've been kind of thinking, you know, how to, because you're right, there's a short-term problem here and a long-term problem. I think in the short term, what the building commissioner has said is that regardless of how the applicants have filed, he finds that because they're pre-existing, non-conforming structures, that there's a special permit available to these uses, wherein the, the review process allows for some discretion. And one of those points of discretion is, is this in keeping with the intent of the bylaw? So your feedback for that short term is helpful to them, because if they agree with the building commissioner that a special permit is appropriate for one or both of these uses, they can incorporate your comments here and say, okay, this is the spirit of the bylaw, you know, perhaps, you know, this was in, in, in keeping with it. But long term, you may wanna address footnote twelve and make it clearer or, or whatnot. My thoughts on it are just that you have definitions of uses, but of the million different things that people could do with their spaces and the million different business enterprises and commercial concepts, it's really hard to fully encapsulate all of them in a series of definitions in our zoning bylaw. I might recommend perhaps some change that would allow for a special permit review for anything going forward, not just the pre-existing, non-conforming structures, because at some point, the test will be on new development, not pre-existing buildings. And, you know, at that point, would you be able to have a special permit available to an applicant who wants to build a building with an urgent care? Right? I, I think the special permit does allow for some discretion, so that's something to kind of batter around.
I, I do like that idea.
I do too. I mean, I guess that, for the short-term question though, does anybody have a concern about the proposed uses in these current structures? Because I don't think we do.
But I'm having a little problem with it. It wasn't pre-consisting, pre-existing, non-conforming. It was a new build. It wasn't there. Well, where's Taco Bell?
The Norwood Park South building.
But I, let me do one at a time. That's pre-existing, non-conforming. Taco Bell and that's a new building.
That structure did precede the zoning change.
Yeah, and of the two uses, I would think that.
We're kinda going at the same time, wasn't it?
It's an empty space, so the building's already built. It's been there. It's an empty space. Here comes somebody new, so they're not building new space for them. So therefore, it becomes to be existing, non-conforming. Even though it's a purely new building.
But even of the two uses, I think that the, I mean, not to shades of gray here, but the, I think the urgent care more closely fits in with the spirit of the bylaw anyway. So the Taco Bell itself is eighty feet, or the, the facade, is the actual urgent care a hundred feet back? Not that it matters, it's.
It wouldn't be if it were located, you know, with the, the front door.
Yeah.
Right, the sign that goes over the front door.
Yeah.
That would be at eighty feet, so, I mean.
But is this type of, hopefully, we're giving the feedback.
There's no second floor of this building either, it's the other thing.
Where is it?
I thought there was gonna be, no?
There's nothing up there?
Well, mechanical units.
Debbie.
I think the issue that I have with it is the reason we have a five-member board and they have to come for relief on something, whether it's zoning or planning, is yes, we can't put in every single thing. We can't know what we don't know. So we can't put in, you could use this, you could use that. It, let's just take this one piece of dirt here, and it seems to me that we've been going in circles with this property since it's been built. If we weren't gonna have a, a drive-through, but we put the drive-through in, we were gonna, none of the, as far as I know, I don't have them right in front of me, but the landscaping plan still hasn't been completed on that piece of property at all. I mean, we, we went, we went, we spent a lot of our time and energy to, to do a nice landscaping plan and make it, it's a big run of a hundred and something feet on Route One. It hasn't been complied with. It is a, so it's just kinda, every single thing with this property has been an issue for me. And do I disagree that urgent care is something, it's, it's the new kid in town? Do I disagree that it's retail? I completely disagree it's retail. I don't think it's retail, but I think it's something that is a service.
Foot-traffic driven, yeah.
Foot-traffic, so do I have an issue with that? No, I'm, you know, I'll touch the third rail, no. Do I think you call it retail? No. It's a, a hybrid. Is it unreasonable to ask for this within the? No, but that's why we have a five-member board, because we're all allowed to have an opinion. And my opinion is that I spend my time and energy sitting here, asking people, when they come in front of us, to do what the decision says, and then a year, two years, three years later, they still haven't complied with it. And I'm a little resentful of that. Nobody's paying me to sit in this seat and not eat dinner, and I do all of this stuff, and then, why? None of the landscaping plan on that entire piece of dirt has been complied with. A little thing, maybe? Not to me. It's not a little thing to me. It's a big deal, what Route One looks like to me. I stood up for this thing, this, this whole Route One district thing. I took it on, we, I know we all did. We put a lot of time and energy into it. Does that pertain to giving the urgent care, to saying I, I don't disagree with urgent care? To me, it does. Would I stand in its way? Probably not, but I wanna go on record that I don't sit here and do all of this stuff for an exercise. It's an exercise in futility if we're not gonna ever comply to the stuff that we asked them to do initially on this particularly piece of property. We don't have anything by the honey baked ham thing. We have no landscaping. We have no driveway things. It is insane down there. If you go to the liquor store, if you go to the honey baked ham thing, if, it's just craziness. And that's my, that's all I got to say about that.
David.
I, I, I'm on the, kind of the team of urgent care is somewhat more related to retail. I'm kind of more agreeable with what the, the building inspector was thinking. Yeah, there are problems, you know, with footnote number twelve. I don't think we should get rid of it. I, I don't think, you know, it doesn't need some tweaking, yeah, you know. That's something we can do. It's a first run, really. First couple, first few, first three runs, so it's to be expected in some things, you know, especially when, you know, they're so new, so.
So I guess as for the Planning Board's opinions to be relayed to the ZBA, hopefully, we've, everybody's made their position. we've, everybody's made their positions pretty clear. I mean, I guess Ernie may have something to say if he has an opportunity, but he can communicate through you.
As far as Ms. Homewood's concerns on the landscaping, is that something that is, is there a way we can address that?
I don't know, you know, the information that's been provided to the ZBA with respect to its application to the ZBA don't include-
Oh, no, no, I don't mean as far as with them, is-
I don't know, I don't know that it would trigger site plan review, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I don't have enough information to know whether it would require a modification to the existing review or not. If it did come back before you, absolutely, you know? And I would also need to look at what you already approved, not having it in front of me. If they're not in compliance with something that was approved by this board, then secondly, that could be something that the building department could enforce.
That's, I think that's more important.
And that's separate, probably separate from everything else, but I think it's worthwhile just to take a look.
Okay. Thank you for your time, Ernie.
Thank you. Okay, the next agenda item is a review of the meeting minutes from September 11th, 2023. Has everybody had an opportunity to review?
Yes.
And does anybody have comments, questions, revisions, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
You need to call into executive session to get your hand read further in your mind.
Yes, sir. Okay.
A couple of questions on some other stuff, you want me to do that later?
Debbie's commentary, it's left to do it after executive session or now?
No, now, because after executive session is, is closed.
A quick question on, I only have meetings up to December 18th, am I, am I missed?
We haven't, we haven't put together a draft yet.
We haven't? Not, it didn't fly over my head?
Or we have been working on it, but we haven't shared it with the board.
So we have November 6th, November 20th, December 4th, and December 18th. So far, we haven't done anything with the rest of the year.
Yeah, we'll hope to have a draft for you to look at and take a vote on in the next meeting.
Okay. CPA, what do we call CPA now? Could we have a report next meeting?
Yes, what would you like to know?
I'd just like to know how much money we got. We get this from Bill O'Donnell, you know, how much money, I'd just like to know what we spent, because there might be some things-
We haven't, yeah, we haven't spent anything since last-
And what projects are still open? Couple people are asking, they want to get some apps in, you know, first of the year, and I don't, I don't have the information.
If they send them in the first of the year, they'd be like, because they already should have had them in in September.
Okay, I can't, can I talk to him about that?
We can, we can help you with that, too.
Okay.
Kristen has a report available that she can update with the planning board.
Somebody asked me about the meatball company with the blow-up member. We had a, the trucks parked in the, is that still open?
Do you have intel on that, the trucks still line up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Properly?
In idling.
The town has been engaging with the property and enforcing the permission.
Okay, so, this is a done thing, I can eliminate that.
It's not before the planning board.
Okay, all right. And the Grove Street these, I'll talk to you about later. Okay, that's it.
So, that would conclude our public meeting for this evening, and pursuant to Master General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21, it is necessary for the planning board to enter into an executive session. Right. Approve the executive session meeting minutes from April 10th of 2023, if the publication may defeat the lawful purposes of the executive session. The board will not reconvene at the conclusion of this executive session. Do I have a motion to convene in executive session for the purposes just stated?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion to-
She stays?
She should stop filming after you guys take the vote.
Okay, so, so there's a motion to second to convene in executive session for the purposes stated. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.